Good morning. Welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, September 12th, 2018. We're in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square in Salem, Oregon. We begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance and invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I went to the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation lunch yesterday and they had the Sprague High School marching band that came in. And so when it came time to salute the flag, they did the Star Spangled Banner. It was pretty awesome. I haven't been to a Sprague game for a while, so that was pretty good.
I was at the Chamber luncheon on Monday and they had somebody sing the National Anthem. And I turned over to John and I... Wasn't it you, John, who I was with? And I said, "That person could give Janet some competition." She had a beautiful voice, yeah.
That is good, because they're going to need someone at the fair when I retire, so...
I'm sure. I'll step right up and start singing.
Okay, moving right along. We have no one signed up for public comment and everyone out here looks familiar, so I'm assuming you're all here for a board item and not for public comment. Nobody's jumping up, so we will move right into consent. And Commissioner?
Yes.
It's your turn, because you're the only one that is here, so...
It is my turn, because our colleague is on a nice, well-deserved vacation. Under Business Services, approve a recommendation to adjust upward pay grades and update specifications for Classification Code Number 225 Juvenile Detention Supervisor and 230 Juvenile Program Supervisor. Under Public Works, schedule an adoption of an ordinance concurring in the City of Donald Urban Growth Boundary Amendment for September 19th, 2018.
And I will second your motion. Any discussion on any item?
Other than, it's great to see the City of Donald's Urban Growth Boundary expansion going through without opposition.
Yes, and I was sick last week, but I watched you on FaceTime Live, so I am up to speed on all... It was not a very long hearing, so...
You saw those good things we said about you. Yeah.
Of course. All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's approved. I actually wrote in, but nobody wrote back to me, so...
Oh, on Facebook Live?
Yeah, I waved. I did one of those wave things, so...
I should probably watch it.
Okay. We will now move into our action agenda. We have one, two, three items today. The first is under Juvenile and is to consider approval of the contract for services with Trinity Service Group LLC for $1,250,000 to provide food management services for the various programs at the Juvenile Department. And Troy Gregg is here. And Kathy Grace is coming up as well. Good morning, Troy.
Good morning. Troy Gregg and Kathy Linville-Grace for the Juvenile Department. The Juvenile Department is requesting approval for contracted services of the Trinity Services Group. The reason the contract's coming up now is that in the last year, the USDA and the Nutrition Services Federal Guidelines did some modifications and changes, so we needed to do some changes through the procurement process and change kind of how we were moving through some things. And so we needed to put it back out for contract. We had two responders for the RFP and Trinity Services was the one that received the highest marks, and so we are going with them for this timeframe. I will make note that the food services has been a bit of a challenge for the Juvenile Department over the last several years, and so there is some work going on in the Juvenile Department to look to see if there's not a better route for us to be able to do that, whether we can manage that for ourselves in a cost-effective way and provide good services and food services for the youth in our program. So if you have any questions?
Who is providing the food service right now?
Trinity has been the one that's been doing it over the last several years.
So this is just the same company that we're going on with? And is this the one... I'm remembering, I mean, we said the last few years. I'm remembering a lot of years and Fay talking about bruised fruit and, you know, I'm trying to remember. So is this the same problem that we're having with the food quality? Okay, and so when you're saying we're looking at things, you're doing some cost-benefit analysis about taking it in-house? Or can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I would be happy to with that. And so, yes, this is the same company that we've had some challenges with. I think that with the new procurement guidelines and the expectations out of ODE, it gives us a little bit tighter rein on addressing some of those issues that have come up with them. However, I am not confident and I don't think we as a department as a whole are confident that it will still meet the level of quality and type of service that we're looking for. And so I think there's some practical applications for us to be able to move forward. And so I think you hit it on the head when you said, you know, it's a cost-benefit for us to see if we can, one, meet the requirements when it comes to USDA and school nutrition guidelines and get those reimbursements back. Can we do it practically? Is there a way for us to tie it into the programming that we already do in teaching and training youth with the whole thing to make a benefit out of it? And I think we'll have some good answers for that come the next budget cycle, but it is something, like I said, that we need to put work and effort into, because I don't want to come and obviously present something with just kind of off the cuff. But it is... And I think honestly, we're pretty excited about that opportunity with it. And I know Kathy is, and she's got a smile on her face with that.
Right, well, I mean, you've had a great experience with the fresh start market in doing that training. I know it's not a lot of youth that get to work in that, but... And I don't know what the scope is. I'm thinking, you know, what happens out of the county jail and they have a pretty robust program with people that are out there that work in the kitchen and...
Yep, and the work that I've done historically with the Youth Authority. Youth have always been involved with the process. It's been a real educational process for them and a real benefit overall. And again, I think if you can handle it and manage it in-house, one, we can use a lot more of the resources that we already have through the garden on campus. And again, going to do more scratch food versus kind of pre-prepared foods that you end up getting with a lot of contract services.
The looney sandwiches and that kind of stuff, right, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I know, Troy, this is not an area that I'm familiar with in food service at all. No, I'm just... And I know doing the ride-alongs with a couple of people that they're already working, you know, to prepare sandwiches in the morning and you've got different things going on. And it was great to hear your staff unsolicited talk about they thought this could be another one of the AP programs where we actually train youth, you know, with skill sets and do those types of things that... And I think that the one issue that hangs up, because John brought this to me, like, two years ago, I think, you brought this contract to me and is an experienced person in doing contract food service. I looked at it and I said, "There's no way." I mean, it's almost impossible with the federal reimbursement numbers and everything that we could do a much better job if we probably took a look and said, "We don't need that" and did our own program and have the youth participate in it and staff participate in it and take pride in it. It would be... It could be something that we would be really proud of to see a difference, so... I'm all open to trying to help any way I can in that area.
I appreciate it.
And I'd even probably put an apron on and come out and cook with them.
You did a great job weed-eating for us.
Yeah, yeah, that weed... I'd rather cook than weed-eat like I did that day.
So the $1,250 is just a one-year contract, is that right?
It is not. It is expanded.
It's a five-year contract with renewed every year.
I see. And so, okay, so you'd have to divide five into that to figure out what the annual cost is.
And there is an opt-out?
That's the question.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
It expires next June and then we can...
Okay, so you could just not renew it, is right.
Right.
Okay, if you were to make that decision.
Correct, and that's the plan. And also, just an awareness with the contract is the budgeted amount with the contract is probably set a little bit high, but the challenge with the Juvenile Department is obviously the fluctuation of numbers, because we have detention and gap and then the AP program. So there is some flexibility within that. So even though it's targeted at $250,000 a year, it wouldn't quite get there based on, unless something really happened within the Juvenile system.
John?
You know, we've argued about this for years because of the cost of using county employees to do the food preparation. But I'm thinking it's about time to look at a new way. We really can't be constantly serving these kids bad food. And we're going to have to look... If they can come up with a way to do it so that it is cost-effective and good for the youth, then I think we ought to be looking at that fairly soon, like in the next budget.
Yeah. I guess some ideas that we could talk about offline that I think would be something we ought to explore anyways.
Right, we do appreciate it.
Yeah.
And do we get reimbursements? I was looking through here for things like USDA, right? I mean, there's money that comes in that could offset... Could continue to offset some of the costs that we might have?
Yes.
If you follow their guidelines.
Correct.
Are those hard to follow?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
They are. They are very restrictive guidelines.
Very restrictive, and there's a lot of waste involved.
Right, particularly with breakfast and lunch is where the reimbursement meals come from. You have a lot more flexibility when it comes to dinner. Snacks are also reimbursable. But again, I agree and I think the department has had the experience, like you talked about, of some very frustrating meal services and a lot of complaints from the kids around some of those. And we have worked hard with Trinity to kind of resolve those. And I think we're in a better place than we are right now. However, again, getting back to the point is, I think, and our anticipation is that we will bring something forward for next budget cycle for consideration. I think that we can come up with something that's going to be a win-win for everybody at the Juvenile Department, youth staff and everyone alike.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just look at these reimbursement rates that are agreed to. And you're paying labor and food out of that and try to fix a nice dinner for $3.90.
Yeah, I think the jail is actually less per meal than that, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, but they've got a higher volume of when you're cooking for...
That's true.
What, 400? What do we have, 400 people versus what do we have in the detention center at max?
Yeah, 32 is max in detention.
And so it's just kind of a scale?
And that fluctuates, yeah.
Okay, got it.
It's good. All right, Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve a contract for services with Trinity Service Group LLC for $1,250,000 to provide food service management services for various programs at the Juvenile Department.
And I will second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our last two items are, we're going to put on our hat as the Contract Review Board. And the first Contract Review Board item is under Business Services. Consider approval of an order to set a public hearing on a proposed exemption from Marion County Public Contracting Rules for the Courthouse Square Fire Alarm System Upgrade Public Improvement Project for Wednesday, October 3rd, 2018. And we have Camber Schlag and Colleen Kuntchchafens. And Larry.
Good morning, Commissioners and members of the Board. My name is Camber Schlag and I am the Contracts and Procurement Manager in Finance.
Good morning, Colleen Kuntchchafens, Business Services Director.
Good morning, Larry Tilford, Facility Program Manager for the county.
And we are before you this morning to request the approval to hold a public hearing on October 3rd, 2018 at 9:30 a.m. to hear testimony in regards to the use of an alternative contracting method for the Courthouse Square Fire Egress System.
So I'll just give you a little bit of background. Courthouse Square here is a five-story building. As you know, it's two-lane transit bus mall. The complex separately owned by units and common elements are co-owned by Marion County and Salem Area Mass Transit District, commonly known as Chariots. Complex currently has a Silent Night Module 5104B alarm system providing life and fire safety services using a Honeywell NFS 320 Notifier for alarms and status reporting. That's all real technical stuff. The building's HVAC system has smoke detectors and deducting and upon detecting smoke in the building, these will trigger the alarm. Currently, the alarm is an enunciator beeper on the first floor and bell at the south main entry doorway. Notification of an alarm is sent through the phone intercom system by a live designated person. This part of the process is not automated. The proposal for adding horns and strobes to the fire alarm system will upgrade the service, provide for automated notification, both audio and visual, and eliminate the human element. The county's public contracting rules require the use of traditional invitation-to-bid on public improvement process. And in this, we're asking for a different method, and that's what I'll leave to Camber to discuss.
So through discussion, Business Services and myself has decided that we'd like to pursue the design-build-alternative contracting method. Typically, public improvement is required to be an invitation to bid. However, the Marion County Public Contracting Rule Section 40 and also Oregon revised Statute 279(c) allow for us to do these alternative methods. The design-build is a great opportunity for us. It would allow us to issue basically an RFP to seek a consultant or contractor that will control the design, the construction. They basically take on the majority of the risk in regards to this project. The county would provide a project manager and work very closely with the contractor as well. But in order to do this, we must provide some findings for exemption for the local Contract Review Board to approve in order to be able to do this process. So basically, the items that we have to cover are that it's unlikely to encourage favoritism and diminish competition. We believe this process will not happen because we will be issuing a public notice and this RFP to have proposers to provide proposals to us. We will be evaluating them based on cost, experience, and several other factors. We will also not be encouraging... Or we will be having a substantial cost savings because this gives the opportunity for contractors and consultants to put pen to paper and really be giving us some good figures in regards to the construction and design of this building or this courthouse, the fire system. Within your packet, you do have a complete list of the findings and the... Basically, the support for each of those findings that we have to comply with under ORS 279(c). Do you have any questions for me today?
A couple of questions. One, is an alarm system kind of a specialized area of construction? I mean, you're not just going to go out and get kind of a general contractor. There's alarm specialists that come in and will look at something like this.
Correct, very specialized. And that's where the risk is. And that's where I want to make sure the risk is put on the contractor to make sure all the things and the elements... And the fire marshal comes in and ultimately approves everything, but that's where we're at.
The contract will also comply with the public improvement terms and conditions, so it will be completely in compliance with ORS 279(c) as well as Marion County's Public Contracting Rule Section 40.
Okay, my second question was, so is the human element we're getting rid of Sam? Is that...
Yeah, I saw your line. He's gone. You can talk about him. And he's not watching it on Facebook Live.
Do we not trust that he's doing a good job on that?
It's not just Commissioner Brentano, but it's also when Alan Pollak from Chariots is also there and/or our emergency management team here, whether it's Kyle or Justine who have to stand in if no one's available, because a lot of people sometimes aren't available when those things happen.
Yeah, well, actually, I've been kind of nervous because if Sam were gone and it failed me, I have no... I've not practiced or I have no idea how to do it.
And that's where you call Kyle or Justine to help.
Right, yeah, exactly. But all I'm saying is...
Meanwhile, the building's on fire.
Right, yeah, exactly. It's like, who do I call?
This is a ser... Yeah, you know, we're laughing about it, Madam Chair, but this is... Because I think Sam was gone one time and I had to do it and I struggled to, you know... The instructions I have right underneath my glass on my desk, but I still would be going, "Okay, what do I do next?"
Yeah, I read them once.
Having it automated would really be a benefit.
Surely would be.
Safely, yeah.
I agree. All right, so we are today just agreeing to hold a hearing.
Right.
And the hearing then would determine that we would do the design bid process, is that right?
Yes.
So we're just setting this up.
Mm-hmm.
So Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve an order to set a public hearing on a proposed exemption from Marion County Public Contracting Rules for Courthouse Square Fire Alarm System Upgrade Public Improvement Project for Wednesday, October 3rd, 2018. And I assume that would be at 9:30, right?
That's what I think. Yeah, I looked at the resolution. That's what it says.
Okay.
Or order whatever.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think it's important to let the viewing public know this is our attempt to be very open about our bidding process to make sure that we're very transparent about that. And this will go forward. People will know about it and will have a chance to have good bids.
Yeah, it's an order and it does say 9:30 in it.
Do we have any comments from legal counsel or just...
No, everything is in good shape. It's ready for the hearing. I think at the hearing, you can further deliberate, but I think you got a preview of everything today.
All right, so you made the motion?
I did.
I will second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's approved. We'll see you on October 3rd.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Then we have one more item. So Camber, I think you're sticking around. And this is under Community Services and we're still under the Contract Review Board. And that is to consider approval of the class special procurement to contract with Sedcor Travel Salem North Saniam Economic Development Corporation and Oregon Garden Foundation for implementation of the Marion County Economic Development Strategy in the amount of $2.3 million through June 30th, 2023. And so Tamara Getch is joining Camber. And who's going to start?
Mm-hmm. Thank you very much. I will go ahead and turn it over to Tamara and allow her to provide you with some background information.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Tamara Getch, Director, Community Services. And under our department is the Economic Development Program. So for the viewing audience, information, each year, Oregon allocates 2.5 million... 2.5% of the lottery proceeds generated through lottery activity in Oregon to be allocated and distributed to local counties throughout Oregon. Marion County's percentage of those dollars are managed out of our department. And in this last year, we've created a strategic plan for the Economic Development Program that focuses on increasing Marion County's economy while working with policymakers, community members, and entrepreneurs. All of this is to help us and our general public in growing the economy. Our interest is to really increase employment as well as to improve the standards of living. And through the Community Services Department, our Economic Development Program has $4.3 million in its current fiscal year for fiscal year 1819 budget. Of that budget, we have set aside $445,000 for what has been identified as board-designated allocations. This particular allocation is something that we have done for quite some time through a different process. It's been more elaborate and yet, when we look at these allocations, there are very... There's only a few who can fill the need of this particular activity. The grant program is meant to support regional economic development activities through entities that have the expertise to do that. We're really looking at promoting, expanding, and preventing the downward trend of economic investments in Marion County. So with the regional focus on improving manufacturing, agriculture, and tourism is an important piece. But we've also, in the last couple of years, we've put a concerted effort in the canyon. And we're looking at how do we provide not only infrastructure but small business growth and development interests in that canyon area? They need support in helping local entrepreneurs thrive and understand the path to success through a business model. So this proposal is in an effort to streamline what we do with limited interest in by other parties in the community and also limited abilities through organizations in Marion County to provide this type of service.
So with that, Marion County Community Services Department is seeking an exemption from the Marion County Public Contracting Rules, which is Section 20-0285, which is a class special procurement. So the board would need to approve the use of utilizing this class special procurement. By contracting with the established regional economic partners, we are able to move forward with our economic development strategy. We also would not be encouraging favoritism and we wouldn't be diminishing competition either because we've done RFPs for these services before in the past. This has been a board-delegated, designated fund. But Community Services seeks to obtain other partners through applications and other RFP types of solicitations to see who's out there to be able to provide these services. So right now, we're asking that the board approve the special procurement so that we can continue to work with these entities to continue with our regional expansion.
I have a question. The order says 2,225,000 over five years. This doesn't obligate us to these agencies every year, right?
Correct.
Okay. Second question is the... The history, in the past, we have not done it this way.
Correct.
And the reason for the change is...
To help streamline...
Somebody may have picked that up.
We have done a much larger RFP process, which puts these targeted organizations through going... And we have...
Okay, so they had to go...
We don't have other applicants for these applications. And so they've had to go through the hoops and we only have one application for each one of these areas.
Okay, I got it. So we've been doing it a different way and nobody else applies? And so we're just saying?
Correct.
This is the way we're going? Okay, understood.
Yeah, that sounds good. And just, not that you'd want to change the way you do it, but this is more a question for Camber. But I remember we used to be able to do it where you could do a letter of intent process. And so you get a letter of intent and then if you get more than one letter of intent, then you have people fill out the application. But if you only get one letter of intent, then you can just move forward and award it? Have you ever heard of that?
I have not, but that doesn't mean we can't look into doing that.
Yeah, I remember we used to do that with the commission. We would just do letters of intent. And that would allow us then to, if there was only one applicant, you know, we'd set the parameters to apply for it, that we could then consider that one.
Yeah, I see that as being very doable. It sounds like a very simplified two-step process and I think it would fall within our rules.
Okay.
And just to, we've been talking internally about our other grant procedures about a letter of intent process. We haven't had that conversation with Camber, but our internal conversations have been to that same focus.
And then it saves you from applying, scoring, all that kind of thing. If there is only one out there, but it allows you to compete.
Correct.
And we used to set it up for, you know, like, an early childhood home visiting program that did blah, blah, you know, so it was like fairly tight parameters for it. So anyway, if that's what you were looking for. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes. John, boy, you are talkative today.
Oh, yeah, I love it. One of the things that Camber knows very well, almost every session of the legislature changes the purchasing laws. So she'll have to look at those again, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question, but it's still feasible because this was back in the 1990s, so...
Legislature does good things.
They're always messing with things.
Okay, Madam Chair. I'll move that we approve the class special procurement contract with Sedcor Travel Salem North Saniam Economic Development Corporation, Oregon Garden Foundation for the implementation of the Marion County Economic Development Strategy in the amount of $2,300,000 for June 30th, 2013. And just a clarification, because it's $2,300,000[1689.95] And just a, just a clarification, because it's 2,300,000 for June 30th, 2023 on the motion, but it's 2.25 on the recommendation on Exhibit A.
We will get you a corrected copy of that this morning.
Which should, which should my motion be, 2.25 or 2.30?
The cover sheet says 2.3. You're right, Exhibit A says 2.225.
I'm here's 2.3.
Sometimes I see things that-
So the, the amount in Exhibit A, I believe, is the correct amount, and what was on the paperwork was a rounding up of that.
Okay.
So-
So the 2.225.
This should be in the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I amend the motion to consider approval on the amount of 2.25, $2,225,000.
Over five years.
Five years.
All right, I will second your motion. Any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, that's approved, also, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your good work on this, I know this is a lot of organizing.
Yeah, good for you, Madam Chair, if I could.
Yes, John.
If we could take a few minutes or a minute and let Colleen introduce our new HR manager?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Would that be okay? HR is such an important function in the county that, and we're really proud to have Angela with us.
Yeah, I read the email yesterday.
As a matter of process, do you have to undo your public procurement hat right now?
Close the, close the Contract Review Board meeting.
We will take off our hat as the Contract Review Board, and put our hat back on as the Board of Commissioners, for the purpose of meeting our new HR manager.
I'm sorry. Colleen Kooch-Tapkins, Business Services Director, I'm happy and pleased and excited and elated to introduce Angela Solzby, who's our new HR manager, and I'll let Angela give you her own introduction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. So, yes, Angela Solzby, the new HR manager, very happy to be here. I am a native Oregonian, and I have had such a warm reception here in Marion County, it's been wonderful. John has been by multiple times to say hello, thank you, and I'm really excited to make a difference.
Well, glad to, glad you could join us, so where were you before here?
I come from the University of Oregon, and I was a Assistant Director of their HR Services for a shared service unit there.
I wore my orange shirt on behalf of her today.
So you need to understand, we have two gentlemen on the Board of Commissioners, they're kind of Beaver fans, and, and one of them doesn't even like to be in Eugene.
Not fans, we have actually bleed orange when we get cut.
Yeah, right, okay, but I, but I actually did my doctoral work at University of Oregon, and understand that there is bipartisanship in these two schools here.
Angela, she, we got to meet at orientation on Monday, and she knows that there are good people in bad places. You know that?
Both my daughter and her husband are ducks, so, there.
And Barb Young in our office is definitely a duck.
And she knows Angela Wilhelm's.
Oh, really?
Gary's daughter, right.
Yeah.
Very good. So I might add that Angela also came, has extensive experience with Peace Health, she was a business partner there with Peace Health for 11 years.
11 years?
And then she also served in the military, so she's a veteran.
Thank you for your service.
Congratulations, thank you. Well, we are very excited to have you join Marion County, thank you for dropping by and introducing yourself, and I know we'll be in lots of meetings together in the future, talking about all kinds of fun things, so.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And to their right is Jane Vedo, our County Council, so you'll be interacting with her extensively.
We met on the elevator today.
Oh, yes. Very good.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, since we have our head on, what's that, you want to sign this?
Unless you want me to read the calendar while you sign it?
No, I'll read the calendar. So I'll go ahead and read our Wednesday to Wednesday calendar, these are meetings where two or three Commissioners will be present between Wednesday, September 12th, 2018, and Wednesday, September 19th, 2018. We just concluded our board session here at the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square, it is Wednesday, September 12th. Tomorrow, Thursday, the 13th, is our monthly Kaiser Marion County Meeting at Sherry's Restaurant in Kaiser, that starts at 7:30 a.m. At 9:30, we're coming back here to Courthouse Square to the Silverton Conference Room on the 5th floor for a work session, an update on the Economic Development Program. At noon tomorrow, Thursday, is the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Meeting, and that's at the Chamber offices at 1110 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem, and I believe, are you on the hot seat in that meeting?
I am in the hot seat.
Along with other, it's the county commissioner candidates, right?
I'll cool it off quickly.
Yeah, very good. And then at 2 o'clock, I am going, by the way, that's why there's two or three Commissioners there, just want to be part of the, part of the party.
Ask me the softball question.
Right. 2 o'clock, we have another work session, no, this is a meeting of the Marion County Extension and 4-H District in the Silverton Conference Room, 5th floor, Courthouse Square. And then at 5:30 tomorrow is the Marion County Fair Volunteer Appreciation Event, and we will pray for sunshine, because it's going to be held in the Oregon State Fairgrounds Picnic Area, 17th Street in Salem. Friday, September 14th, is the SOAR, or Student Opportunity for Achieving Results Program Graduation, that's at 9 o'clock, out at Shemecata Community College, Building 6 Auditorium. And then Monday, September 17th, at 8:30, we start the day with calendar review at Silver, in the Silverton Conference Room, followed by management update at 9:00, a work session at 10:00 on Network of Care, and there'll be demonstration, all of these in the Silverton Conference Room. Then at 11:00, we have the Public Safety Coordinating Council Planning Meeting. At 2:30, we're still on Monday, is the East Service District, East Salem Service District Special Meeting, I think we're missing a word there, in the Silverton Conference Room. And then on Tuesday at 9:00 is a work session on Solid Waste, Silverton Conference Room. At 2 o'clock on Tuesday, the 18th, is the Marion County Housing Authority Regular Board Meeting. And then next Wednesday, September 19th, at 9:00 a.m., we are back here in the Senator Hearing Room for our regular Wednesday Board Session. So, I went to the state and breakfast yesterday morning.
Thank you for being there, because I know I was-
And there were only five people when I got there, I got there a little bit late, and one of them, I just sent an email, was named Susan Chamberlain, she's from the Mill City, just a citizen that wanted to come, is interested in the sewer project in the canyon, so I just copied you and Danielle, to see if we could send her some information, I took her email address. And then we had a couple people from NORPAC, and we had a city councillor newly appointed from Jefferson, and I reported to him that we were working on that policy, on the letters that they sent, and he said that they appreciated that.
Is that the gentleman that works for Chariots, right?
Yes.
Yeah, he shows up, he's been showing up regularly, yeah.
Yes.
It's great to have somebody-
And then of course Keith, the city manager, was there, so it was kind of a small group, but I had an opportunity afterwards to talk with Carrie Sesums, she is the owner of the Covered Bridge Cafe, and she was highlighted in our Giving People Second Chance Breakfast the very first year, and is table captain this year, and was talking to me about coming in and meeting with Ashley and her daughter, and just how very inspiring, she was the word that was, so that was kind of neat to talk to her, she's really a great person. And then you and I were both at the Taylor's House ribbon cutting yesterday, so that was really, men, cars parked all over that neighborhood.
Right.
And I think I ended up having to park around the block and walk down with my gimpy legs, and that was really a great, great project. It was nice to see Raul Marquez there in a leadership role, is he, is he still at McKay's, is he a senior this year?
He, he was a senior last year.
Okay, so has he grad-, he's graduated then?
I think he graduated. He's still on the United Way Board with us.
Okay, is he going to college locally, or what's he doing?
You know, I'm not sure what, what he's doing, I'll follow up, because he was gone-
He looks very official in a black suit and everything.
He was in Washington DC interning this year, back in DC, because I was trying to get in touch with him on some business I was doing, and, so I'm not sure, I'll have to follow up with him and see where he's at. He did a good job as-
He did a great job.
Coordinating and emceying that, right.
Senator Courtney, and Mayor Bennett, and it was very nicely done. Tricia Ratliff and the group of ladies that were there, I think I mentioned this, that we nominated them as a board for the, for their Hometown Hero Award, and they, and they won out of all of these applications for the 100 Day Challenge, so they're a very dedicated group of staff there, too.
Yeah.
So that was fun, kind of a fun day yesterday.
So, you, you were, you were ill last week when HP and I met with Lieutenant EY?
Yes.
And it was great to have him join us, he, he, we got to talk a lot more detail about what he's, his experience, great experience, and in fact, I remember him testifying when I was in House Judiciary on DRE stuff, because he was a Drug Recognition Enforcement Officer, whatever they called, and he is a member of the Benton County and Lynn County Public Safety Coordinating Councils.
Oh, really?
So, it'll be interesting.
I think he did tell me that on the phone, and I said, every council is different, so don't judge us until you see what we do.
But, but one of the, one of the things that came up, and you and I can talk about this with the sheriff, in our conversation, he was talking about some of the challenges that they have, and he gave an example of, you know, a guy walking down the freeway that, that is having some personal issues, and obviously mental health issues, and he, he said, well, you know, what do you do, you get the guy, the guy says, I'm trying to go someplace, and he says, well, I can give you a ride to such and such a place, so he takes him down the freeway and, and sends him, you know, to this place, but he said, he goes, you know, what do we do, what are the challenges, and I talked about our court teams, right? And I don't know, the state police don't know about that resource. I mean, so maybe there's a challenge, maybe there's an opportunity for us to go to the state and say, hey, what about another grant, put a mental health person together with the state police?
Right.
So we had, would have-
Well, yeah, and mobile crisis teams actually are supposed to be statewide, that was part of the settlement agreement between the Department of Justice and the Oregon Health Authority when they said they wouldn't sue over the community mental health system. So there are actually metrics that the state is supposed to reach in terms of creating those mobile crisis teams.
Right, so I, I think there's a local, with him being on our Public Safety Coordinating Council, and he's in charge of this, the Albany and the Salem offices, there might be a chance for us to re-, work together here locally to try to implement that with him, that's, that's an opportunity.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity.
Right, and he, because they would give them the resources that they need on situations like that, here locally. We were at SEDCOR, we, we received the-
Yes, I was really sorry, I missed that.
Economic-
You wouldn't have wanted me there that day.
No, but, but it was, it was great to, to have our, Tamara's team, Tom and Danielle got to come up, and Sam and I, to receive that award as the Business Partner of the Year, and for the things we've done with economic development, that was really cool. And then I got to go from there to the Casa swearing in of Lily Mae, the puppy.
Yeah, I saw that on Facebook.
Yeah, and so I, I missed it when the dog raised its hand, when the judge said-
Paw.
The paw.
Right.
The paw. I missed that part of it, but KGW was there taking pictures, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to see it on TV, because I don't watch much TV, but, and then Sunday, I went to the Harvest Festival breakfast out in Staton, which was pretty exciting, and looked like it was well-attended. Did you get over there, Kristy? Yeah, and the breakfast was really good, and so, yeah, it's been a good week, and then yesterday, I was, I was in-
You went to Bend.
Bend, for the Governor's Reentry Council for our business implementation, and we, we had 50-plus people in the room, the room was packed, we're at OSU Cascades Campus, great guest speaker who had had a background and has turned his life around, and the, we were doing this workshop in two hours now, from the full-day thing, and we've combined the employer-employee panels, and, and it seems to go really well, and they, they do this cell phone poll, there's two questions at the beginning, do you hire, you know, people with backgrounds now, and, and then the other one is, what are some of your concerns, and you can type in a word, right, and it shows up in this poll. And at the end, we had 88% people said they were more likely now to hire people with backgrounds based on the information they got in those two hours, so that was our, so we did Eugene, we've done Portland, we did the kickoff here, Eugene, Portland, then next week, we go to Roseburg, Grants Pass, and Medford.
Nice.
And that completes everybody that wants to, to do it so far, so it's pretty cool to see some things that started here locally, in Marion County, and to see a statewide deal, and Collette Peters has been asked to come to the, what do you call them, the Corrections Directors Annual Conference-
Right.
And talk about that, so.
Right, that's great.
And John Viev Martin from Dave's Killer Bread Foundation will be accompanying her on that.
Well, you know what I'm thinking, the, the information that we saw yesterday on that Resilience movie-
That was fantastic.
Really fits in to the prevention side of what we should be doing on this reentry initiative as well, you know, I mean, these, these kids of these folks that are, have mental illness, or have troubled backgrounds, or experiencing trauma, I mean, it all interrelates, and so it'd be great if we could get what we saw yesterday in front of Collette and her team, and that, you know, I mean, I was just thinking about that.
I'm, I'm thinking that-
Or the council.
What I, what I might do is, I'll talk to Cindy-
Booth.
Cindy Booth and Kelly about maybe, maybe even at our next business implementation meeting, or somehow looking at that, and then maybe there's a way to get it to the Governor's Reentry Council at one of our full meetings and show that video.
Right. It's well worth the time, I mean, people go, oh, an hour movie, but then when you get into it, I mean, it's just powerful information.
Right, and then I think you're talking about having her come here in January, the doctor that's featured in it.
Yeah, would love to have that happen, and, and we were talking afterwards about resources.
I think we could get that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I really do think that that is something that would be worthwhile, because if you have the speaker, you've got the draw, you know, that gets people there, and could have it at the Alson Awards.
And then Tamara mentioned something about interacting with the outward mindset people, and so I didn't, I was going to follow up with her and see what she's thinking there, and how that, and how that interacts.
Well, I think what they're looking at is that if we're looking generally in these organizations that already work with people that oftentimes have the hiatus scores, and we're trying to implement this psychology of hope thing that we started with Chan Hellman, that there's an intersection with the Arvinger, because it's really like how people are, the culture that you have in your organization, and how people are approaching other people, and then what you're doing with those people based on this knowledge, so they're kind of trying to tie the three of them together, not just the two, so the two were tied together in the movie, but in the discussions the commission had, Sue Bloom was there, and so many of them have been trained in the Arvinger that they thought, you know, that that would also be a nice intersection for them to do.
Yeah, I just haven't been able to make it to the Cornerpiece Board Meetings very much, because I've been so busy lately, but we'll have to figure that out, and get with Chris over there and see how we can do that, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, well, lots going on.
Busy week.
Yep.
Jane, anything from you over there?
The county filed its motion to intervene in the Detroit Lake case, so that went out on Thursday, so that's news.
Okay, when will we hear back whether we are approved to intervene or not?
So the court has scheduled a time to look at it in mid-October, and I'm assuming we'll get some responses from the parties before then.
Okay, what court is it?
It's US District Court.
Okay, thank you for doing that, and your staff.
All right. All right, well, if there is nothing more today, we will adjourn.